Call this meeting September thirteenth, Commissioners to order. If y'all stand with me with pledge and a short prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, in the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice as well.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless our county and our nation, and we ask for your guidance and wisdom in making good decisions that will be pleasing to you, our county. All these things we ask in your name, amen. Sheriff, do you have anything?
Good morning.
Morning.
Couple of updates, we are now using our body cameras. So finally got to have those on the road, and we're happy about that.
Do we need to smile and wave?
It's not, it's not recording. We're recording here, so, no, I think the community's happy, we're happy about it. So that's good for transparency. One thing that I, that I know I've mentioned a lot, but I've got to bring it back up. The jail is staying very full, and we are working very, very hard to process people in a timely manner. We are at two twenty-five today. I believe that we released thirty-seven yesterday. It's phenomenal that the, that we're just, we're just staying full, and I'm very concerned about this because we're just, we have no, we just don't have any more room. So I just want to keep that on, on the radar, that we're just going to have to think about that next pod.
So I, I believe that the plan from the council was, I think the bond for the Justice Center goes off in 2024. Is that right, Debbie?
Yep.
And then we'll be able to rebond.
Is that like what portion of 2024?
It's January. I, I think it's January one, yeah, yeah, early, early year.
Yeah, we're talking four months or so.
And I know Elkhart is coming down and doing our architectural tour next, next week.
Uh, it's, yeah.
Sometime.
Good, so we're, we're looking at maybe in four months, we're going to have a serious discussion about it. That's good. We have been working on, in order to, to keep the jail population down, I think I mentioned this last meeting, but working on getting people out on, for pre-trial on ankle monitors. And so there's a lot of coordinating going on there, but I'm just surprised at how high the numbers are staying. So the most important issue here to bring up today is our vehicles. We had a, a crash just a couple of days ago. A lady turned in front of one of our, one of our officers and totaled his car, which was a new car. We are currently down to, I believe, two spare cars. And I don't know how to, I don't know how to make this any more urgent. One thing that I told our guys in a, in a department meeting a while back is, I'm not going to scream and yell when I say, hey, we've got to do this, just take that as serious. So I don't know how, how else to make this any, any more serious, but we are at a point where, you know, another vehicle accident, and we're going to be out of vehicles. Part of our commitment to our officers, when we hire them, is a take-home vehicle for personal use. That's a, it, it serves several purposes, but it is also part of our agreement when they are hired that they have a vehicle for at-home use. So we have, we are just burying money into vehicle maintenance. It's, it's phenomenal how fast the money's going out, new transmissions, new suspensions, new engines. We are in a, this is a, a crisis. We've got vehicles out there that I know one of our K-9 guys is driving a car. I believe it's a 2013 with two hundred and some thousand miles on it. The only spare vehicles we have are in the two hundred and some thousand mile range. Many of our on-duty vehicles are a hundred sixty, a hundred seventy thousand, a hundred eighty thousand. And the, the urgency here is getting a, a police vehicle and getting it equipped takes a long time. It takes months and months. The order bank has already been opened up for next year's orders. The state pricing is in, and, and we don't even have the ability to order right now because we don't have any direction on where we're headed. So what's happening currently is thousands of vehicles are getting in front of us to where, when we do order, and I don't even know when we're going to be able to, it's going to be months and months. So I'm just saying, we're, we're in a crisis, a couple more accidents or engines going bad, and we're going to literally not have vehicles. And, and here's what I am prepared to do. If, if an on-duty officer does not have a vehicle, I'm just going to put him with another officer, and we're going to be, we're, we're already short, as I've talked about before, several, we need several more full-time officers. So I feel like we're, we're running short on the road, but we're, we're getting into a position to where we're liable to have two and three people riding in a car on duty, limiting our ability to patrol. And I just don't know how else to, to say, this is an urgent, urgent thing. I don't want to say this is an emergency. It's a crisis, it's not an emergency, because I've talked about this from January first, and now we're nine months into it, and I'm just not, I'm not apparently understanding how, like, like what do we do when we don't have vehicles for the police officers to drive? Does anybody have?
If you looked on the itinerary, that's, all of this is up for discussion later on in the itinerary?
Okay, okay, good. All right, no problem then. I didn't, I just, I think the itinerary just came out this morning, I didn't get a chance to view it. So just urgency on vehicles, that's, that's, that's a big thing on my, on my heart right now, so that's all. Thank you.
Next up, we have the enterprise lease agreement. And Joel, I'm going to apologize because I got this at six thirty last night, did not have a chance to go over it, so.
It's all very confusing as well. Well, because the way they made the changes.
Yeah, there are a series of agreements I looked at while asking some revisions, enterprise made some of those revisions. I think, I mean, I could live with a version of the agreement that I think you have in front of you. It's a little different because rather than make changes directly to the agreement, they submitted them to the agreement, which gets you in the same spot, it just creates a lot of barriers.
I think my biggest concern all along was damage to vehicles as far as excessive wear and tear, and who determined that, and if that was still in there, and there's a couple other items as far as value and who determines an excessive mileage and if we pay. So those have been addressed, and you're comfortable with them?
Well, I mean, you're going to have to monitor, because obviously then there are, you know, there's ones that are making termination on that.
Yeah, that's right.
It's going to have to be an interactive process as it goes through the situation where you're writing checks.
Yeah, that's what concerns me the most.
So it's, it's my understanding that the council has budgeted, and Sheriff, if you want to come back up, the council has budgeted, I don't know the exact dollar figure, sixty-four, five, to lease four now. And I'm just going to ask this question, because at your budget hearing, I was listening to it livestream, and when they said that you could lease, they were budgeting to lease four cars only, you made the statement that you maybe didn't want to lease anymore. Is that still a true statement?
So, so the reason that we started looking at the lease option was simply for that, to, to have an option. We did not know whether it would be more cost-effective or not. So we have put the effort into getting all of this lease information, simply to be able to look at, at both options. I, looking at the cost to lease four cars, I agree with Steve about, I'm very much concerned about, you know, how, how they're going to value the car at the end. I'm very much concerned about the mileage, because we put enormous amounts of miles on the cars. So, but looking at those numbers, I don't have the breakdown right in front of me. It appears to me that it is not going to be, it's going to be less cost-effective leasing as it, as compared to buying, I believe, so sixty, what was that number again, real quick?
Sixty-four, five.
Sixty-four, five.
So it's my understanding, they budget, that's what they've budgeted, so if you don't lease, they've budgeted one car.
Yeah, correct. So, but, but here's my concern with the sixty-four, five, that is sixteen thousand dollars a year for the vehicle, that if you break it down, and it's, it's basically a five-year lease. You take that times five, that's eighty, pushing eighty thousand dollars. So we can buy a vehicle and, and outfit it, and there's, there's a lot of details there in the, in the upfitting that when I say sixty thousand dollars per vehicle, that's about fifteen thousand in upfitting. With the lease, they're not putting nearly the amount of items in the upfitting. So, so in the long term, it, it looks like the leasing is not going to be, we would probably be better off to go get loans and buy the vehicles.
I know that's what the city did.
Yeah, so.
I mean, basically, they went to the bank.
Yeah, so that, so I, I feel like, long-term, and, and I know we put a lot of effort and a lot of hours into this, this lease thing, but again, it was simply to be able to show that we've done our due diligence and looking at both options. There's just two options, buy or lease. I think that we're going to get in trouble, long-term leasing. I think we're going to come up at the end and, oh, we, we thought it's going to be worth eighteen thousand, but actually it's only worth three thousand, what do, what do you do at that point? So due to the mileage that we put on, the wear and tear, and just due to those numbers right there, you know, four cars at, at sixty-four thousand, we can go get a loan and buy four cars and come out better off. So I really think that we need to pump the brakes, no pun intended, on, on, on the lease. I just don't feel like it's a good financial move, long-term. And I appreciate all the hours, Captain Matt has spent enormous amounts of hours, you all have too in this, but at least we can say we have really, really searched it out, and, and I just, I think it's long-term. It's not, it's just not going to be cost-effective. We're going to end up losing money over time, and I, I just, I, I think that we'll be better off to not enter into a lease agreement.
Most other counties that I talked, that I talked to, it, it didn't work for them. And I know, I think, I think, and, but you can just shake your head, yes or no. I think, I think previous sheriffs had attempted it, and it didn't work as well. Okay.
I, yeah, and I, and I foresee that, and again, I appreciate all the time you all have put into it. I know that, that we've put a lot of hours into it, but at least the public knows we're searching for the best option, for the long-term, short-term, all of that. So I think that we, at this point, we, we just, we need to appreciate that we, we have, we understand that it's not going to work for us, and move forward in, in the way that we have in the past. And, and of course, you know, they can get loans or however, it doesn't matter to me what, what works best on, on that end. But I do think, long-term, I think we need to just appreciate the effort and, and bow out at the lease option.
Joe, do you have?
So I guess with that, I will make a motion to deny anything moving forward with the lease agreement.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to not enter in with enterprise lease program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Now, do you, or have you any ideas as far as exploring loans through your department? Or Joel, can you address what the city did?
What the city's done is basically it's a lease purchase. I mean, so on structure, it's like a lease, but you make payments, and then at the end, you can lease from the own vehicles. It operates similarly to a loan, but it's set up as a lease.
Is that a strategy that you're willing to?
You know, on the financial end, I, I guess that would be more of, you know, the commissioners making that call. I just, I need adequate number of vehicles, and, and I, I think that the council can, can sort out how to go about that. The one thing that we did like in, in looking at the lease was somebody else doing all of the legwork in, in turning the vehicles over, reselling them, you know, good example, we've got grass growing up around all vehicles in the back of the, the Sheriff's Department. And so that, that was a, a positive, we kind of hoped to get somebody to, you know, to run that side for us, but obviously there's a cost to that. I feel like that what, what we have to get away from is just running these cars till, till they're only worth what we can scrap them out at Neil Scrapyard for. We have got to be able to turn them over when they have some value to them. So I think if we can get out of this cycle of just running them to death and then, then put them in the backyard, you know, we can manage the process of, of selling them. There are agencies out there that do help with that, that's what they focus on, buying used vehicles. So as far as the, the loan, whether we get loans for them, that, that is up to the council. I just need, I just need vehicles, so I, I'm, I'm good, except I didn't want us to get into that. I just felt like the, the lease financially is going to eat us long-term. So that, I guess.
So that was part of my concern with it when we started out, was we were a little worried where that was going to end us up financially. I guess we'll get with, have a discussion with council, and we'll talk with Joel in a little more detail.
Could we, what, what kind of an update do we have for the, the ARPA funds?
That's in, that's coming up in discussion.
I think there's some discussion on the way that's worded, because it says remaining revenue received from our local virus recovery fund, approximately five million dollars for the repair improvement of county buildings and acquisition of vehicles.
Yeah, I, the motion was, it was, that meeting was just an odd meeting. I thought the motion was made one way, but it wasn't. So we need to kind of break it out, because five million for repair improvement of county buildings, Sheriff would be happy if we said you get five million dollars and we take nothing, but that's not, that's not going to happen. You know, so we need to, now, in that discussion, in that ARPA committee meeting, we also talked about Henry County EMS needing a couple SUVs. Gabe Beatty waits and measures, in order to do his job, he needs a slide in his vehicle. Tim needs, EMA needs a truck for pulling the emergency trailers. He's got nice trailers, but nothing to pull it with, and then obviously the Sheriff's Department, so. Joe, do you have anything you want to?
Just Joe?
Yeah, you, Joe.
In the meetings, what we started talking about was a specific number of Sheriff's Department vehicles, and then it was added on to with the other vehicles. So are we looking to put a number on the type of vehicle, or on who is going to get vehicles? Or are we looking at, at, what are we exactly looking at here?
I would say that's probably a, a fair assessment of what we're looking at. It's trying to figure out what we're doing, because like I said, right now, it's just a general five million dollars, and that's, that wasn't the intent of that.
I'll make the, I'll start the discussion with the easy ones. Please don't take that the wrong way, Sheriff, but these are easier than dealing with the vehicles and the, and the council and the way they've got things budgeted. So this was just a little convoluted, so I would like to see it split out with Henry County EMS up to, and Mandy, correct me, I think we talked to, to your, if you want to come up, you can, to equip two SUVs for Henry County EMS, and in hindsight, when Henry County EMS stopped being ALS, we transferred all of those SUVs over to the city.
Yeah, you gave them away.
Yeah, in hindsight, we shouldn't have, but at that point in time, nobody was sure that you was.
I think we can do.
You were doing, you did a great job in, in turning it around, so there was some doubt at the beginning. So I have approximately fifty-five thousand each on that, so two of those. I think, I, I'm not, I don't remember what Gabe's slide is, and he's not here, but I have listed here up to sixty thousand dollars, that would just give him wiggle room to, for his slide. I want to say it's around forty, forty-five for the slide. No, up to a hundred and ten, because each vehicle's with upfit about fifty-five. They may be able to find something less, but I don't want to. And then Gabe, I think his slide, last time he looked at it, was somewhere around forty, forty-five, but just to give a little wiggle room, just in case, up to sixty thousand for weights and measures. And again, of course, I don't think it'll cost that much, but we can bring that back in if he, and if he, and then Tim, you said truck, what could you get yours for? A truck that'll pull your, that's heavy enough to pull your trailers? Okay. So if we, if we do up to eighty-five, and again, Tim's been looking at vehicles that are less than that, but to give wiggle room there. And now we can move back to the discussion of the Sheriff's vehicles.
What was the total we were working with for a single vehicle?
I believe, I believe it was sixty thousand dollars to purchase and equip. I had asked specifically for six vehicles equipped, so I'm trying to run the math. Six, sixes is three hundred and sixty, but I thought I asked for three hundred and thirty thousand. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure what the exact number was there. I, I, I want to say a couple of things here, I, and I, maybe I'll, I'll wait till I hear further. Are we, are we attempting to pull the money out of the three hundred and thirty thousand that I had requested for these other items? Is that what I see happening? No, okay.
These are all separate discussions from your vehicles.
So I, if I remember right, I, I thought I asked for three thirty, but that, that number doesn't add up to sixty thousand each. But I'm, that should have been three sixty, but three hundred and thirty thousand, it, it, that would get us six vehicles equipped. It would, it would help us tremendously. It does not cure the problem whatsoever. I think you may have heard Shannon with the council say, you guys, I'm sure you need fifteen vehicles right now. And we, we, we do, but the six vehicles, the three hundred and thirty thousand, we can make work for six.
So do, do you do three thirty, or do you do wiggle room on that also?
So the council has, if you, if we release or buy the lease, they have appropriated four cars for 2024. But approximately, assuming you can get it. I'm assuming, I mean, I don't, I can't speak for the council, you know. I would have liked that the council would have discussed with us before they just put through a number and said, this is for lease and this is not for lease, so we would have known what their thinking was.
One thing the council reiterated over and over is, you know, we need to, to keep ARPA and, and councils two separate things, let's not.
It, it is two separate things, yes.
Yeah, so I.
It would, it would help better understand where they were, what they were budgeting for, so that we could back into whatever number we decide that we're willing to fund.
The council has, has provided four vehicles for, for years, years and years, four vehicles outfitted each year. And, and they, as, as they said, they're aware that that pace does not, we, we, we probably need seven vehicles a year in all reality to stay on, on track. So we're so far behind the eight ball, as Tim said, once you get behind, man, it's, it's, and we're, we're in so much trouble. So I just, like I said, the council has gotten us four vehicles a year for, I don't know, for a, a, a very long time. And so I just, I know they advised, let's keep the conversation separate from what we do from ARPA, because I had brought up ARPA a couple of times, I'm like, that's a separate thing, so.
Right now, I'm looking at, we're talking somewhere between five hundred and ninety-five and six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. If you're wanting to put a number with that.
Is that what you just added up, what I'm trying to add up? My fingers won't work.
Yep. What did you put down for the sheriff? The three thirty to three sixty. So that's why, that's what makes you between five hundred and ninety-five and six hundred and fifteen. If you total all the rest of them in, that's where you're at. So the question here is, because we're trying to, obviously number twenty-nine on our.
We have to balance what we.
We're going to have to, we're going to split this and have it re, read down, have Joel rewrite that for two separate motions, or two separate lines. So somebody needs to.
And I still want to balance out what we, because we have eleven million dollars worth of repairs to these companies as well, so I also want to balance that as well.
I'll go a record to say, I, I appreciate you saying up to three sixty. I don't, I'll go a record to say, if, if, if you just split that in the middle and said three forty-five, i- if we could allot a money amount, there is a, you know, maybe there's a, a possibility we, we, I, I, I think it would, I would rather just set a, a money amount. I don't, I don't need to go to three sixty. I would be thrilled if you said we're going to allot three thirty. It, it has to go to vehicles and upfitting, nothing else.
So has anybody at Sheriff's Department, I know there are a lot of grants for police vehicles through the state. Does anybody checking on that, looking through those? Because I know there's a lot of grants through the state.
I, I can't say that we are actively checking on those.
I would encourage that.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll take that.
Yeah, because we have a lot of, you know, Tim, Tim runs, I mean, a lot of departments run on, on grants. I would encourage that.
Okay, we'll, we'll definitely work on that.
Yes, ma'am. Look for the grant. Yeah.
Well, that takes us to the five ninety-five as far as total, if, if someone's wanting to assign a dollar amount or to take away from.
So let, let's, let's do this to, well, I don't know, if it's more convoluted to make each one a line item by itself? Is that going to be easier, or?
I, I think probably it would be easiest if it read that the amount assigned to each ARPA purchase new vehicles, and then with the remainder going to the county buildings.
Okay, so like a twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, or just list it all in paragraph?
Yeah, you could do it as twenty-nine could be the vehicles for the following departments and assess the amounts. And then thirty could be remaining amounts.
So somebody needs to, I'm going to make a motion to move forward on this, and then we can continue the discussion, and you can put it all in one. So I'm going to make the motion, because we haven't gotten to that far, for up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars for Henry County EMS, two SUVs, up to sixty thousand for weights and measures, slide unit, up to eighty-five thousand for Tim EMA for a truck, so we can get that off the plate and then move forward with the rest of the discussion. So I will make that motion to modify the coronavirus resolution, twenty twenty-three, nine dash thirteen dash zero one six. Yes, I will. Henry County EMS, up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars for two SUVs. Weights and measures, slide unit of up to sixty thousand dollars. EMA, up to eighty-five thousand dollars. Weights and measures slide unit of up to sixty thousand dollars, EMA up to eighty-five thousand dollars. Not, we'll do that, we'll do that separate.
And I guess my question to further that discussion is, are there grants out there available for each?
I will tell you that Mandy and Tim daily look for grants and apply for grants. I won't say they apply for grants daily, but every day are looking at grants, yes. Mandy has run a lot at her department in the last two years on grant money, yes. I think Tim runs almost ninety percent of his department on grant money, if not almost close to a hundred percent on grant money.
Well, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for weights and measures EMS and EMA. I don't know what that total amount would be. You're talking hundred and ninety-five. Two hundred and some.
Two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Now, onto the sheriff's vehicles. Looking at roughly three hundred and thirty thousand dollars left for the purchase of sheriff's vehicles. Any discussion?
Joe's got his thumb on it like he's gonna, you, you got your thumb like you're gonna push the button.
I'm just waiting. I'm, I'm making a motion that we go forward with the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the purchase of the sheriff vehicles.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I don't know if I can second for that amount. I would be willing to go less, but I don't know that I'd be willing to go that high.
Well, then that motion dies for lack of second. Do I have any other motion?
Could I say something?
I'd, I'd be willing to go as high as three vehicles with ARP. That'll give seven.
What was the motion?
Uh, three vehicles. Yeah, at a hundred and eighty thousand, up to a hundred and eighty thousand.
You want to say something?
I do. I, I want to reiterate what happened in the ARPA meeting and I want the public to understand what happened. This is very, very clearly, very clearly a personality conflict.
It is not.
Let me, let me, let me speak and then you're welcome to. So I've been talking about vehicles from January, the start of January. I had a meeting right off the bat at the sheriff's department with several council members and Commissioner Plummer was there. Vehicles was a main topic. And I asked if ARPA, or ARP, whatever it is, if we could get money for vehicles from ARP. And I specifically asked Commissioner Plummer. She said, well, you'll have to just come and ask. So I, I asked if ARP funds had been used for emergency vehicles previously. And her response was, it's public information, you can look it up.
Oh, no, I did not. I said, yes, we did. We're not going to get into this back and forth, John.
This is not a back and forth. I, I requested it to not be. I want to make a statement for the public.
But I'm going to stop you if you put words in my mouth. I said, yes, we did, ambulances.
Okay, I had a lot of people there.
Okay.
Okay, so just, I want to, want to complete this statement. So the, it was made very clear, you have to come and ask. If you, if, if you can get vehicles, you have to come and ask the ARP committee. So I said, well, I, I certainly will be there. What is the date? I apparently put the date in my calendar wrong. I showed up the day before the meeting was, was to be held. I, I walked in here, there's nobody in here. I kind of panicked. I thought, oh, I goofed this up. So I went over to the commissioner's office and Commissioner Plummer and Commissioner Dellinger were in the office. And I said, oh my goodness, I said, did I miss the ARP meeting? They said, no, that's tomorrow. So I said, oh, thank God. Okay, I said, do I need to get on any special agenda? Obviously, I'm, I'm going to ask for vehicles. And the answer was, no, you just need to show up and you can ask for vehicles. So I said, okay, no problem. We'll see you tomorrow. Myself and Captain Kovacs, Chief Deputy Smith were here. If I remember correctly, we were the only ones in the seat, in the seating area. The ARP committee started up. They deliberated for fifty minutes. And then a motion was made to give the rest of the money to the county to do building repairs. And along with that motion, to, to dis, disband the ARP committee. I was, I was totally in shock. I thought this cannot, this certainly did not happen the way I heard it. So I came to the podium and I asked, I said, did I just hear a motion to give all of the money to the county for building maintenance and to disband the ARP committee? The answer was yes, and that motion was approved. So I was extremely upset, extremely upset, as I should be. They both knew why I was here. There's no questioning that. I was in their office the day before. That was a simply plainly appeared to be a power move.
It was not. And if, I'm going to interrupt you, because then the committee said, John, come up. We will, Kyle rescinded his motion and the, and yes, he made a motion. It got convoluted. The ARP committee is an advisory committee only, doesn't mean anybody has to do anything. But you were allowed to present. And a motion was made, but we're not going to go into a back and forth. We're going to stay focused here.
That's, that's correct. I don't want a back and forth. I want to be able to.
Well, and I do want to say something because I remember the conversation in our office. And I do want to make a slight correction because not once during the conversation that I had with you, did you mention you were coming for vehicles? You said you wanted to be at the ARP meeting to make a request. You didn't specify vehicles. So to say that I knew you were coming for vehicles, you specifically did not say, I'm coming for vehicles. Had you done that, then I would have agreed with everything you just said. Other than that, I beg to differ that that was not the actual conversation. But you did want to be here for a request. And like I told you during that meeting, nothing that was said here was set in stone during the ARP committee meetings. Those were just recommendations. That was their recommendation for the rest of the money and to disband the committee because we would have been done at that point. I then told you that if you had a request, because that was just a suggestion by the committee, and so you made your request and that's where we're at.
So back to the, you have to come and ask. Here's what is, is, is really odd to me. So I was allowed finally to, to ask. I asked for three hundred and thirty thousand for six vehicles. Nobody else was there to ask for anything. So today, today, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars has been given to departments who were not there to ask. And.
And if you recall in that meeting, I said, if we're going to talk about vehicles for county departments, let's add in, because Tim had talked to me prior about, hey, I'm in need. Mandy, because I meet with these department heads all the time, that I, you know, but.
And, and so, so you had a very clear understanding that I'm in desperate need of vehicles. I would have assumed you might have brought that up even, you know, you brought it up for them.
You came and asked for it. I'm not going to argue with you, John. I'm, I am not going to argue. You can be upset that these are in here. That's fine, be upset.
Listen, I'm not upset.
You know, Henry County EMS doesn't get a dime of county money. They operate solely on what they produce, a hundred percent. He gets very little of county money. He operates on grants. They don't have any money for vehicles. They don't get any money appropriated out of the general fund for vehicles. So I get it. You can be upset and that's fine. I mean, everybody has their own opinion. But this is not going to be a going back and forth, bashing, doing whatever, however you want to do it. We're not going to do it, so.
And I'm not, and I'm not.
Even, even this right here, what we're recommending, once the resolution is drawn up, we could vote it down and not approve it for EMA, EMS, or the sheriff's department. These are just recommendations and this is a resolution that we're going to have Joel rewrite and send back to us and then we will vote on it. We may change and say, okay, we're only going to approve this now.
Council may say, we're not approving any of it. I mean, because I think that was brought up at, at budget meeting, that, that commissioners make the plan for the ARP and if they don't like it, they don't have to approve it, which is absolutely true.
I understand that. And, and most certainly, I am not upset about these departments getting emergency vehicles. They need them probably as bad as we do. I am happy with that. I guess what throws me is there's five million dollars going to buildings. And, and for some reason, there is, you have an issue with a, a certain amount of money. You're good for a hundred and eighty thousand, but boy, we've got.
That'll give you seven vehicles, which is three more than any other sheriff prior to you has ever gotten. I'm, it's a compromise, John. Sometimes we have to compromise.
Well, they didn't, they didn't have to compromise at all. You just simply made up out of thin air, we're going to give them this, this, and this. I come asking for it and don't get it. So here, here is, here is, is, is my biggest concern. I've said it over and over. I want to make it clear because I want.
I mean, it may die for lack of second. I don't know. If we could just move on, we've, I have heard you, you have made your point. You have made your point.
I haven't made the point that I am, what was that?
That was your microphone.
Okay, here's what I, here's what I, I want the community to know. The main reason that I'm asking for vehicles is for safety. It's for safety. We have officers who drive hundreds of thousands of miles a year, driving vehicles that are falling apart. It is a liability issue. It puts my officers at risk. It puts the county at risk for lawsuits. I have given this illustration. I'm going to give it again. The Indiana Sheriff's Association warned us about this. A county would not spend money to fix a five hundred dollar-ish part on a vehicle. It failed and killed the chief deputy's wife. The county paid out millions of dollars in a lawsuit. My issue is the safety of our officers, the safety of the people that we are passing when we're running to emergency calls. That is, that is my issue. We are putting our officers in great liability. And I absolutely, I cannot make sense, and I, and I, I know I don't have to, but what is happening right here does not make any sense that there is a hundred and some thousand dollars that you have an issue with. It makes no sense at all. You will give them, when you told us, you have to come and ask. I came and asked. I don't get what I asked for. The other people get, you just make it up. I would appreciate it.
I didn't make it up, John, and we're repeating and circling back around. We get your point. We get your point.
Well, I, I.
And let us finish our discussion, because we could sit here for an hour and circle back around.
Okay, well, I'm not going to circle, I'm not going to circle anymore, and I've had to circle because you keep wanting to, to talk here. I could have made the statement and been done. But I want to say this, our department, our guys, they're, they're watching very clearly. They know very clearly what is going on and you are putting our officers at risk.
So if I don't give you fifteen cars, if we don't vote for fifteen cars, are you going to say that we're putting officers at risk? We don't give you a hundred cars, we're putting your officers at risk. What's the number that you're not going to tell me that I'm, that I am crapping all over the officers?
Okay, the number is.
Know exactly how I appreciate them and how I feel about them. So don't try to make this as I don't give a crap about the sheriff's department.
The number would be that we requested three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for vehicles. And narrowing that number down because of some reason, I have no idea, that, it doesn't, it doesn't make good practical sense. That's my opinion.
Part of this goes back where, part of this goes back to where the money was originally supposed to go to in the first place. And everything extra we take out to give somebody else is something else that doesn't get taken care of. It's just like going to the grocery store. If you want to buy four loaves of bread, but you get the checkout, you only got money to take care of, you can only buy one. All right, you have to put three loaves back. And that's where face, every time we take something out of this, because this money originally was all supposed to go for the maintenance and repair of buildings. So we're not going to get this opportunity again, and that's what we're looking at, was everything we take away from it. And your request for more vehicles is any different than any other sheriff that's come before you that's asked for vehicles. And they've managed to do with what they've had. And we're not saying no to new vehicles, but we're given more than we've ever given before. And you could buy a brand new vehicle and have a part fail on it and cause an accident. And if you go back to where somebody else was riding in a vehicle, it goes back to the argument of whether we should have take home vehicles or not. And I remember you having that discussion when you were campaigning for sheriff, where everybody should be taking home vehicles or not. So then that, that discuss, I mean, is, this could keep going on and on and we never get anywhere.
Do we have, let me ask you this question. Do, do the commissioners have the authority to, to dice this up? Is that not, I'm just wondering, because we've gone from an ARPA resolution to the commissioners now sorting out things.
The commissioners are in, make the plan of all ARPA funds, yes.
Well, see, in all reality, there didn't even have to be an ARPA committee. The commissioners were the sole proprietors of that fund's period. We did it to help and get more input from other people.
With the council having to appropriate. So we could put all of this together, we could put in three hundred and sixty thousand dollars into the council and to here for your cars and the council could vote it down.
Could we take that chance?
I, I, I have, I have stated where I'm at right now. Now, it's not, nothing's been said. Joe Wiley has not weighed in on it and, you know. Joe, if you want to weigh in on it, but I think it's a healthy compromise. You know, the sheriff's department of the ARP money already has gotten well over five hundred thousand dollars of ARP money over the past two years.
I'll weigh in at the three thirty, which failed. And if you've made a motion for one eighty, if, if that's going to be the maximum amount, I don't know. I haven't heard a second to that either, so I don't know.
Well, we were just in the discussion phase at that point.
Is there one thing, because I'm still unsure on whether I would approve it. They came back to me on whether we got two squads for EMS at this point or we just got one? And whether we approved Gabe's slide in.
Uh, Gabe's slide is required by law.
So that's where I was at with it. And I'm hoping that Tim finds a vehicle for less than eighty-five thousand dollars, but.
So I will make the motion for three, three vehicles for the sheriff's department that will give them a total of seven, which is more than any previous sheriff had ever gotten.
I'm not going to sign a lease, so apparently it's not going to give us a total of seven.
Uh, you said you were going to look at financing four out of that sixty-four thousand dollars.
I said the council can deal with all of the financing or all that.
Well, that, well, then you have to take that part to the council.
Correct. So they have approved sixty-four thousand dollars is what they have at least stated in their budget.
Well, I can't, I can't control them.
Okay, so I don't want you to use, don't say that they're going to get four vehicles, because we're not aware of that. Let's, let's, so we may get one.
I will change that. I don't know what the council's going to do. I'm assuming, I will assume that that sixty-four thousand dollars or whatever will cover for lease to purchase vehicles as, as it did. It's not a lease. It's what you. It's not a lease, it's what you said about going to the bank like the city did, it's not a lease, it was called a lease to purchase. Are you not signing that either?
I don't believe that in, in that regard, that I have a, that doesn't have to do with me, as I have said earlier, I believe
Correct, but I'm making, I am saying the sixty-four thousand, if that would work that way, that's why, I will take it out to say, so that you don't get upset, seven vehicles, the council can deal with the sixty-four thousand and the, and the, um, uh, whatever they annually, uh, budget for the sheriff's vehicles.
So what was the statement on the seven vehicles in?
I'm taking the, I'm not saying that you will get seven vehicles, I'm saying that I'm making the motion for three vehicles, I will, I will take out the comment that the council has for vehicles.
I was like, if you go with what the council has approved already, the sixty-four thousand and the hundred and eighty that you did, that's a total of two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for sheriff's vehicles.
They have not approved anything, to my knowledge.
It's in their budget.
It's in their budget.
Because they said that if you didn't lease, that would buy you one car, and that's
Right, but it's not approved, I mean, it's budget
It, the, it will be approved. So that'll give you two hundred and whatever thousand, I mean, if you did, if you, actually, if you did the thing with the lease to own, lease to purchase, or financing, I'm going to change the name of it, John, to financing through the bank.
What if they, but if they don't, here's, here's the thing, if they don't
If they, who don't?
We can get one car, we'll have four cars, and I'm, I'm just, I want the community
If you listen to what I just said, so two hundred
Two hundred and forty-four thousand.
So, leased or purchased to, or financing at a bank, that would probably get you, I don't know.
I've been told over and over, keep those separate. I think earlier, in, in this meeting, you said
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying in an overall
What if the council gives us ten cars, then do we not get any, let's, let's
No, this is, the council, council, they don't, we don't have the money to give you ten cars, the council doesn't have the money to give you ten cars. But anyway, let the council, the, the council, you will get that sixty-four thousand dollars, so if you add one eighty plus sixty-four, that's two hundred and forty-four. If you did like the city and financed ten vehicles, you could probably finance ten vehicles with two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Here's, here's what I want to make clear, if
Instead of buying outright.
If we, if we get into a situation where our cars, we, our cars are out of service, I, I'm, I'm telling you, we're not going to have cars on the road, and so
Well, I, I can tell you to, I could go tell you today to go buy twenty cars and you won't have them tomorrow. It'll be months before you get them, so what are you going to do in the meantime?
Exactly what I just said.
Okay.
Because I've been talking about this for nine months now, nine months, it's a critical issue, it's a critical issue, and we are arguing over, out of five million some dollars, arguing over, you say one eighty, we can do one eighty, but we, we can't do this three thirty, that's absolutely ridiculous, it's ridiculous.
I appreciate your opinion.
All right, now I have a motion on the floor for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for three vehicles. Do I have a second on that one?
I guess we're at a standstill.
I'm going to let dies for lack of second. Any further discussion?
We're playing with our officer's safety, and this is a goofy game, it's a goofy game, we're talking about
Listen, I made a motion, it, don't just look at me
I appreciate him not seconding the motion.
Okay.
I appreciate that, I would rather be at a gridlock because you started it, and it's officer's safety and public safety, and I don't appreciate it.
I would appreciate stopping the attacks. I know you don't respect me, I get that, and I really don't care if you respect me or not, but I am sitting here as an elected commissioner, and you will stop, please.
I am standing here as the elected
And I have not disparaged you in any way, shape, or form.
You're disparaging us from vehicles.
I am not, John.
You're disparaging our department.
John, I respect your position, I respect you in that position, I expect the same courtesy for not only me, him, him, or anybody else sitting here. You can agree, you can not agree, that's fine. You and I can have a differing of opinion, that's fine, I still respect you for what you do in law enforcement, and everybody else. So Joe, it's up to you, what are you going, what, what do you want to do? I mean, you, you didn't want to do what I wanted to do, we're kind of at a standstill, so do we just move on?
And you didn't want to do what I wanted to do, so where do we, where do we find even, where do we find
I don't know, Commissioner Dellinger, your thoughts?
I'm sorry, I stepped in
No, I said, Commissioner Dellinger, your thoughts, you've been quiet on this.
I'm trying to figure out where the compromise level is. And if anybody has any thoughts, I'd be more than happy to hear them.
I'm listening for yours. I have voiced my opinion, Joe has voiced his, you have not voiced yours.
Well
Is it too much to ask for a reason for, uh, and, and if, if, if so, it's, it's fine, I don't know, can I ask for a, a reason for going from three thirty to one eighty?
I think it's a good compromise, that's all I'm going to
I'm asking for a reason.
I, I
I have given you my reason.
That's it. You can like it or not like it. Let's move on to other business, and we'll come back to it, because otherwise, we're going to sit here for another forty-five minutes and get nothing done, so I'm going to ask that we move on to this, and we'll circle back at the end.
Well, we can do that, I'm just going to make a suggestion, if we did two hundred with what the council has approved, that's two hundred and sixty-four thousand. As total for either purchase, you want lease to own, however you want to qualify that.
Didn't you need to make it in a motion?
Well, I just wanted to know if that was acceptable, because that compromises between
You make an emotion?
Well, I was asking if that was, I thought we were up for discussion here, so I was asking if that was acceptable, or to my colleagues, I guess.
That sounds like a compromise that would work.
So does anyone want to make a motion on that?
I will make the motion for two hundred thousand, I will compromise up additional two, twenty against my initial.
A second.
Motion's been made in second to spend two hundred thousand dollars on sheriff's cars, with the council approval in their budget of sixty-four thousand, which puts us at a total of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, purchase of police cars. I have a motion in a second.
It's no better than last year, including ARPA, including ARPA, it's no better than last year.
Last year was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for police cars, why is it not better?
Four vehicles, four sixes are two hundred and forty thousand.
But if you're going to do the purchase to own, then the payments would allow you to get more vehicles.
You're, you're really not even going to look at the financing instead of state bank
That's not my thing to do, that's the council, we could, I mean, I mean, I mean So it's, that's not my issue, we could look at, I mean, if we just run numbers like
I would be, I mean, if you think about it, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to, to finance is going to get you many more cars.
Okay, so here's what I would request, then, if we're just going to run numbers like that, let's try to look into financing over a ten-year period, that'll help us get more cars, if that's the way we're going to look at it, let's try to get a loan
Why would you finance a car over a ten-year period?
I'm just making a comment, it's very relative about, we're just looking, we can finance you, we could do all kinds of things, let's, we, we need to get to the heart of the matter.
The heart of the matter, John, is you want fifteen cars, if we can look at
That's correct, and I only asked for six from you, from ARP, and you, and we need fifteen cars.
I understand that, but how many cars can you, what?
You apparently don't understand it good enough, when, if you understand that we need fifteen cars, and you're
You have requested, I don't know that you need fifteen cars, you have requested fifteen cars.
Well, I've actually requested six.
At one point earlier in the year, you requested fifteen, but, I mean, I, I think it's a good compromise to see how much we could get on, because I think they got ten, do you remember what the dollar figure was? But they did ten, my guess is you could probably do close to ten financed over four years with two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, if not, my goodness. I mean, I, obviously, I haven't run the numbers, but, you know.
And I figure at that point, that starts you on your rotation, I would like to think, instead of hanging on to them for that long.
Here, this is my, my, my last statement on it, here's the bottom line, this is a messed-up deal from the get-go, everybody understands this is a need, it's not a want, it's a need, everybody understands that, we're dealing with a chunk of money that, as you said, this opportunity is not going to come along again, it's a one-time opportunity that I would think would be well, we would be well to invest in these items that, uh, that can cure a problem, or at least start helping the cure. You've said there's eleven million needed in repairs, so five million don't really make a dent in it, we can cure
Yeah, because we bonded five point seven million.
We can cure, really start the cure to the vehicles through this, and, and I just, I'm just, I'll, I'll never understand how we, we went from three, requesting three thirty, and somehow it's got narrowed down to, we're trying to make a deal with two hundred, when other people weren't even at the meeting, never came and asked, but we're going to dump off two hundred and fifty, and I, I want, I wish they had dumped off
John, I brought it up at that committee meeting.
I know.
And I don't care if they came to ask or not, you
You told me I had to come and ask, and you didn't give me the opportunity, what I got here
You said, is there ARP available, I said, you can come and request ARP. I have had conversations with each one of these department heads, you can agree with it or not agree with it, you can get on with it, not get on with it, either way.
So you, you had conversations, and you gave them what they asked for, I would
You didn't ask for anything in that meeting, you said, is ARP available, and I said, yes it is, all you have to do is come. You said, is ARP available? I, I'm done arguing with this, um, so a motion was made in second, and
All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So the, this contract is, is for Dick Rogers for J-CAP, but it's the agreement, and I think the sheriff requested that the agreement be between the commissioners and, uh, Mr. Rogers, it's the, it's identical, the fifty dollars an hour is the same, um, and there is still mon- monies appropriated from, uh, or available from the appropriation that we did with our money for J-CAP last year, uh, to fund, um, this contract for another year.
I was like, for the full year, or just the remainder?
Yes, for the full year, for the full year. It, this expires September thirtieth. Am I, am I correct, Sheriff, you wanted this between the commissioners and Mr. Rogers? Does he need to read it?
So
So I will make the motion to accept the, um, contract, uh, between the Henry County Commissioners and, uh, Dick Rogers, uh, to continue to provide, um, services to the J-CAP program at the jail.
A second to motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve contract for Dick Rogers for J-CAP, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.